All right. Good evening, folks. Welcome to the City of Lowell's Attorney Appeals Public Hearing for September 22nd. Just a few reminders. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, if you could just put it on silent or turn it off so it doesn't disrupt the meeting, it would be appreciated. And then also, you can join the meeting tonight in the chambers in person, also through Zoom and by calling in by planning here with DPD. Also, I just want to recognize and acknowledge we have a new member tonight, Dan Shanhan to the board. Welcome. I'm Shanhan. All right. Moving on to continued business, we have ZBA-2025-38 petition is special permit. Applicant is Steve DeRosa, property located at 14 through 16 Rockdale Ave. The petition, the loser will appeal to hold a public hearing to all interested persons relative to an application by the applicant to construct a paved parking area at 14 through 16 Rockdale Ave to accommodate the parking needs of eight nearby properties. The subject property is located in this suburban urban single-family USF zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval for Article 12.6i and financial required in low zoning ordinance. Good evening, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Gary of Gary &amp; Gary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing Stephen J. DeRosa, trustee of the 38 Fulton Realty Trust. With us tonight, we have Stephen DeRosa Jr. Stephen is the operations manager for his father's real estate holdings. We also have Matt Hammer from Landplex. As the chairman mentioned, this application involves a request for a special permit pursuant to 12.6i. And we are also requesting a variance pursuant to 6.10.1, I'm sorry, 6.1.10 in order to expand the proposed curb cut from 15 feet to 18 feet. The special permit and the variance are being requested so that the applicant can redevelop these vacant lots into a parking, private parking facility for residential parking for eight vehicles. The property is identified as 14 and 16 Rockdale Avenue. The property is located in the urban single-family zoning district, and the property contains approximately 3,527 square feet of land. We've revised the site plan since the initial submittal with the application, so you should have that site plan. It was revised on Thursday, the 18th of September, sent into the board, so hopefully that is the plan that you have in front of you. That's what we'll be reviewing this evening. Mr. DeRosa is a large property owner within the city, and he owns specifically about eight properties in the immediate block associated with 14 and 16 Rockdale Avenue. All of his properties in the neighborhood are very, very well-maintained. By way of history here, Mr. DeRosa purchased 16 Rockdale Avenue back in August of 2022 and more recently purchased 14 Rockdale Avenue from the city of Lowell pursuant to its yard sale program in September, last September, September of 2024. With regard to the 14 Rockdale Ave property, there were several conditions on that deed from the city. So for example, 14 Rockdale should not be subdivided or sold separately from the abutting parcel at 16 Rockdale that Mr. DeRosa owns. 14 Rockdale shall be merged with 16 Rockdale for assessment purposes, so there's just one tax bill for the two properties. And more importantly, condition number eight in the deed that I think was distributed to you all, that deed indicates that the property should be used for open space purposes and goes on to define open space, I believe it's highlighted on the deed, but goes on to define open space as gardening, landscaping, and/or off-street residential parking. That deed from the city also has a right of reversion, meaning that if Mr. DeRosa does not conform with those conditions, the city can divest him of his interest in the property simply by filing a certificate at the Registry of Deeds. So I've provided you with copies of that deed showing you the conditions to demonstrate to the board that Mr. DeRosa, when he purchased the property, the clear intent was to use it for a parking facility, and that would clearly be the intent of why the city sold the property to him as well. And that makes perfect sense considering that this densely settled neighborhood lacks both on-street and off-street parking within the neighborhood. So that's the history of how these lots came to ownership with Mr. DeRosa and why we are requesting the special permit and the variance this evening. We've received and reviewed the comments from the DPD staff. So picking up on comment number three, this comment suggests we identify the materials to be used on the surface for the parking lot. The revised plan does that. It also goes on to suggest that any surface area that's not being used for parking should be used for landscape open space. We are showing that on the revised site plan as well, and that is the intent. Matt will be able to demonstrate that with the board in a few minutes. Comments four and five are also addressed within the revised site plan, so Matt will go over that as well. Comment number six suggests that the applicant can and should take advantage of the free trade shade trees that are provided through the greening the gateway program. The applicant intends to take advantage of that, and that's an important aspect of this application considering the urban heat island effect in the densely settled neighborhoods. So we have no problem with the condition that's noted in comment number six. Comment number seven suggests that the applicant extend the drive aisle from 15 feet to 18 feet. That is clearly shown on the revised site plan, and because we are extending the curb cut from 15 to 18 feet, we are also seeking a variance for that maximum curb cut pursuant to 6.1.10 this evening. Comment number eight suggests that we incorporate those concerns within the revised site plan. That is done. In comment number nine, the staff suggests that we show the distance from the applicant's nearby properties to this property. Matt provided a GIS plan with the application. As I said, there are eight properties owned by Mr. DeRosa in the immediate block. They're all within 400 feet, very, very short walking distance to the property. In some cases, three of the properties are directly across the street from the parking facility. The planning and project management team comments are addressed in all of the earlier comments, so no need to elaborate any further on that. And I'll leave the engineering comments to Matt. We have incorporated the transportation engineer's concerns with the revised site plan. However, I note that the transportation engineer mentions that the parking requirements in the USF district are 9 by 18. That is not the case. According to 6.1.10, the USF requires the dimensional parking space to be 8 by 18, and we are providing, I think, 9 by 18 in our plan. So we at least are the minimum dimensions. We meet the minimum dimensions. Otherwise, I believe that we have addressed all of the concerns of the transportation engineers. I'm in possession of a letter from Mr. Lucas Samari, who was here tonight. I've had, you know, where he states a few objections to this application this evening. And I've also had the opportunity to have a few conversations with him regarding his concerns. And I'll let Mr. Samari speak for himself, but as I understand it, his primary concerns are privacy and noise associated with this parking facility. So he had requested that we install a six-foot-high, white vinyl fence along the, from the center entrance to the right going all the way to the ledge rock wall. We don't want to do that for various reasons. You know, for one, it's very likely that that fence would be damaged year after year during the winter storms. We did propose an alternative to that. We proposed providing a row of arboretum, which is, you know, I would suggest a more environmentally friendly solution. When they fill in, it's as good a screening as you can get, and it's greenery for a very dense neighborhood. So we thought that was an option, a good option. I'm not sure that he agrees with that. Again, I'll let him speak for himself. Ultimately, once constructed, the parking lot will have one means of ingress and egress. The parking spaces will be well-defined. The parking lot will have additional landscape features and shade trees, and the applicant will be monitoring the lot to ensure that the people parking in the lot are authorized to park in the lot, as opposed to what currently happens on this lot now. People park haphazardly, basically wherever there's open space on the lot, they park. So this will be a well-defined, monitored parking lot, and we feel that it will actually be an enhancement to the neighborhood. It will add to the character of this neighborhood once it's completely constructed. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Matt so he can review the site plan with the board. That's an important aspect of this project.
Thank you, Councilor. Good evening, Mr. Hammer.
Good evening, Chairman Peck. For the record, Matt Hammer with Landplex Engineering, 60 Fletcher Street, Lowell, Mass. We're here at this property, which is at the corner of Rockdale here. The parcel is 3,500 square feet in size approximately. Right now, there's vegetation here. The entire area is gravel, and there's a ledge slope directly behind the property located here. The proposal is to provide this 18-foot-wide curb cut to gain access to the parking area, of which there'll be four spaces on either side of the parking area. Additionally, we're proposing to do two shade trees here, as well as arbivides and grassed area in this location with its adjacency to 21 Rockdale Avenue. The snow storage area will be here and in this area here for snow removal from the parking area, and we have a detail for the pavement and the tree planting detail. The arbivides that Attorney Gary had cited that could be added to the plan would be located right here to provide some additional screening from the abutter here.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all we have for now. We're happy to answer any questions, address any concerns that the board members may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, for your presentation. All right. We'll open the hearing to the public now. Give us one minute, folks. All right. We'll open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition is petition. In opposition? Yeah? Anyone to come up to the lectern, sir?
Yeah, hi.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Francois Toca. I'm the owner of 13 Rockdale Avenue.
What address is it, sir?
13.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just learned about this project, and then I thought that maybe I would come to kind of learn more about it because I know, as a neighbor, probably have not really addressed us to probably tell us what he's planning to do. So because my house is like, 13 is right, the parking is right there in front of my house. Actually, when I purchased that property going back in 2014, I actually reached out to the city to see if I can purchase that place and probably also improve it because it is a part of, the city has really neglected that area. It really needs some improvement because, you know, many people, many people live in the neighborhood back there. And for correction, it's not just a single-family neighborhood. My property is a two-family, and there are many other, like multiple family. And I know next door to me, there's like four families. So it is a dense area, and there is really a parking need in the area. My question is, I mean, the city can probably improve the parking so that no one has a stake in it, because I'm not sure that I understand exactly what just take is to improve. I mean, are they just improving it to say, you know what, anyone can park there anytime? Because the way it is now is that, you know what, it's first come, first served. If they're proposing to do it, that maybe they're gonna probably have a certain number of parking, which I don't, you know, maybe I will get that information from them, I would probably oppose to the project because I think the city, we all pay taxes in the area. I think it's a responsibility of the city to really come and improve that area, especially it is even, it's not for sanitary reasons, especially in the summertime, there's puddles of water there, you know, because, you know, the area has really been neglected by the city, mosquito breeze there, which I really think that the area should be improved, but I think probably the city should, I'm not sure the city should really probably have a say in terms of fixing the area, whether it's gonna be a mirror there for people to pack there or just improve the, you know, the area. But I would like to learn from them what they just take from it, what are they getting from improving the area?
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir, for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition is petition. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening to the members of the board. My name is Lucas Samari, as Mr. Gary stated. I live directly across from the properties that are in question on Rockdale Ave. I live there with my wife and three kids. I own the house. I've lived there since 2008.
And what address is that, sir?
It's 17 Rockdale Ave.
Okay.
So as an abutter, I did receive the official notice from the city regarding this proposal change, and I'm here tonight to strongly oppose the petition to convert these residential lots into a private parking lot. I want to begin by noting that these issues I will present tonight are not hypothetical. Mr. DeRosa has already been using 14 and 16 Rockdale Ave as parking for the last three years, prior to any formal approval by the city. Since purchasing these properties, they tore down the two-car garage that was on 16, and they converted the lot into a parking lot area, where students have been directed to park there under informal parking rules. I've personally watched students arguing with other people, neighbors, on the street about the parking lot and about the rights to park there. This activity has been ongoing and has already brought significant problems for the street and for the community there on Rockdale Ave. For this reason, I'm thankful for this petition, and I'm glad that it's before you and that I have an opportunity to speak on it. So first, safety and hazards. In January of this year, 2025, I just had purchased a 2025 Toyota Tundra in December, and the truck was struck on two separate occasions between January and February by students who were renting seven Rockdale Ave. These incidents caused over 10,000 in damage, which the students paid for, and the truck was repaired at Hamler Brothers. This was not an isolated accident, but it was part of a longer pattern of congestion, reckless driving, careless parking that's connected to these rental properties and these lots in question. Often, cars are strewn about the street, leaving just inches for vehicles to pass. Second, I'd like to address noise and disruption. Cars are constantly coming in and out of this makeshift parking lot at 16 and 14 Rockdale Ave at all hours, as would be imagined by student schedules. This activity repeatedly triggers motion sensor lights, my Ring cameras. Compounding this, Rockdale is bordered by a 30-foot rock wall, funny enough, that begins on Fletcher, and it wraps around the rear of my house and goes down most of the neighbors on that side of the street and around the rear of all the homes. And so any noise that's created in that parking lot is greatly amplified, in general, any Volumes are amplified at all hours so that even if you're in the back of your house, if somebody just pulls in to the lot, slams a door, comes out, talks, laughs, whatever it is, that noise is greatly amplified. This constant amplified noise destroys the quiet enjoyment of our home and is far beyond the normal residential activity. Third, I'd like to address hazardous conditions for city services. Because of the sheer volume of cars from the properties that Mr. DeRosa owns in just that block, as Mr. Gary stated, eight, I thought nine, let's say eight, 13, which was represented by this gentleman, 15, which I'm here on behalf, I know my neighbors from 15 are not here, they are an elderly Cambodian family that came to the United States in the 1980s as refugees. They have been living in 15 Rockdale Ave since 1984, and they share all of these same complaints and concerns. I am speaking, it's Buntha and his wife, Sumat. So 13, 15, and 17 Rockdale Ave does not receive any snow removal from the city during the snowstorms for these past two and a half winters, which is not the fault of the city. The last two winters, the streets were blocked by parked vehicles, preventing plows from passing through. At the same time, though, Mr. DeRosa has failed to remove snow from his own makeshift parking lot at 16 Rockdale Ave. As a result, both the city street from 13 to 17 and the lot itself were blanketed in three to four inches of thick ice for weeks. Cars could be heard spinning their tires at all hours of the night, disturbing the neighborhood, and in many cases, these were his own tenants, stuck and frustrated due to his neglect. My truck was struck during one such instance. This created hazards for the neighbors, for emergency access, for sanitation pickup, and even for Mr. DeRosa's tenants themselves. Routine trash and recycling collection was also obstructed by the congestion, further degradating the neighborhood's condition. There was a two-week window last winter where trash was spilling out of trash cans into the street because the trash trucks couldn't get in. There are a couple guys that do the route normally, and they've worked and finagled a way to mitigate the traffic, but any time that maybe there's a guy sick or it's a new trash route or a new crew, they just, they have to abandon ship because they just can't get down there. So it results in calling into the city, and the city is always responsive, and they do come out, but, you know, every two weeks is not good enough. Fourth, I'd like to address the sheer volume of vehicles. DeRosa Properties, I guess known as Fulton Realty, he owns and operates many properties in Lowell. I would estimate that to be somewhere around 100. I don't know. On Rockdale alone, we've learned that there's eight houses. So I would estimate conservatively that there are more than 25 displaced vehicles tied to these households. The question that I have for the board tonight is what are eight parking spots going to accomplish? This proposed parking lot is not a neighborhood amenity. It is an attempt to formalize and expand an already unsustainable concentration of vehicles generated by Mr. DeRosa's rental business at the direct expense of safety, public service, and the residential character of Rockdale Avenue. I would also venture to assume that these eight parking spaces will come at an additional financial premium to eight students. How does this help Rockdale Ave? It will displace even more vehicles that have been parking at 14 and 16 Rockdale Ave. On any given night, there's 12 to 15 vehicles that have been, which Mr. Gary also stated, haphazardly been parking in there. These are Mr. DeRosa's own tenants. Where will they go now? I'd like to also just highlight my documented attempts at an amicable resolution with Mr. On August 23rd, I sent Mr. DeRosa a letter, which Mr. Gary referenced, and I outlined my concerns, and I suggested that we work together on alternatives. The letter was confirmed that they received it, they read it, and I began a conversation with Mr. Gary. Since then, I've spoke with him by email and by phone three to four times, trying to figure out a constructive solution. For example, I suggested that Mr. DeRosa rent the large unused Club Lafayette parking lot on Fletcher Street. He states that the parking lot is within 400 feet of the residential homes. I would also like to state that behind the Club Lafayette, which is in disrepair and is currently owned by the Greek Orthodox Church, who is doing minimal business at this point, it's just sitting there unused. Now, behind the Club Lafayette is at least space for 50 vehicles. They're actually in the process of repaving it as we speak. So I suggested perhaps he work a deal with the Greek Orthodox Church, and he could accommodate all of the vehicles that are tied to these eight properties, which if we want to be conservative again, 30, 35 cars. Five students per house. Every student has a car. I also asked at a minimum for fencing along the portion of the lot that abuts my property to help with the noise and privacy. Every one of these suggestions was refused, even the fence, which I think is a simple and a reasonable ask to mitigate even the basic aspects of my concern and the concerns of the other neighbors. That was rejected. As he stated, he offered me bushes on the way in here today, which, if the fence will be damaged, so will the bushes be damaged. And so whether you're replanting bushes or fixing a fence, I understand. So in conclusion, the Lowell zoning ordinance requires that special permits and variances be in harmony with the neighborhood and not adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare. The evidence here shows the opposite: unsafe conditions, amplified noise, loss of city services, what I would feel to be an unlawful use of the lot for two-plus years, and refusal to address even the basic abutter concerns. For this reason, I would respectfully urge the board to deny this petition. At the very least, if any approval is considered, it must come with strict conditions, limits on hours, restriction on the number of vehicles required for snow and trash management, and fencing along abutting properties. Thank you for your time and for allowing me to speak on my behalf, but also on the neighbors. I spoke with the neighbors on 9 Rockdale Ave, 6 Rockdale Ave, Jonathan Rodriguez, five, pardon me, 5 Rockdale Ave. 13 has attempted to speak for themselves, and I represent 17 Rockdale Ave. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition is petition. In opposition? In opposition? It's, you had your turn, sir, so thank you. All right. That portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? In favor? Good evening, Mr. Booton.
Good evening, Chairman Peck, Vice Chair Callahan, and members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Ray Booton, and I live at 255 Fourth Avenue. Thank you for your service and time to our city. I've been a Lowell resident for over 35 years. During that time, I volunteered 18 years with the Pawtucket Youth Organization Baseball Softball League, seven years as a great Lowell Tech School Committee member, nine years on the CDBG Community Development Blockrand Advisory Committee. I also own two businesses in the city and have raised our four children here with my wife Nancy. I've been working with Mr. DeRosa to obtain the land from the city and a private party to turn the off-street parking for the past three years. Mr. DeRosa's goal is to beautify and make the lot function. Mr. DeRozier's goal is to beautify and make the lot functional to take cars off the narrow street. I have sold and appraised properties on Rockdale Ave over my 35 years. When Mr. DeRozier applied to take the three-car garage down, he was approached by the fire department, who wanted to use it for training, in training demolition. Training before the demolition, sorry. Acting in good faith, Mr. DeRozier agreed to that. By taking cars off the street, public safety will increase as emergency vehicles will be able to move more easily and navigate down the narrow road. In the winter months when plowing and sanding are needed, this will also be helped by having cars off the street. As I mentioned, I was on the Community Development Block RAN Fund Advisory Committee, and during that time, from 1999 to 2008, monies were given through this fund to help back central homeowners, purchase vacant lots, and convert them to off-street parking. This allowed the residents to use those lots to park off-street. This only, this not only helped the narrow streets, but it helped vehicles didn't have to park on the grass or the sidewalks. Residents were able to then use the limited space for green space and gardens. Mr. DeRozier has a long history of converting tired properties into appealing, well-maintained properties. I think the idea of having arbovites would benefit the neighborhood due to the limited green space and trees that are there. I respectfully ask you to approve this project, and again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Booton. All right, the public hearing is closed at the moment. I know you had a comment, sir, but if my colleagues want to open up to anybody during their time, it's fine. Mr. Gary or Mr. DeRozier, did you have any comments before we open up here into the board here?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that most of the concerns that I hear, that I heard, will be addressed with this parking facility, with this eight-vehicle parking facility. There was mention of a need for parking in the area. I don't think anybody would dispute that. Puddles of water in the lot, that obviously the lot will be greater, and that will go away. Noise and people gathering. Again, this is just eight parking spaces. Eight residents with authority to park here will be parking here. It won't be what is currently there, which is just haphazard parking, people finding a spot and pulling in, which I would suggest lends itself more to gathering at the site than it, than a functional parking lot with defined parking. One means of egress and ingress to and from the property. So ultimately, I feel that this project, this proposal meets the criteria issued, required for issuance of a special permit. Mr. DeRozier is constructing exactly what he intended to construct here when he bought the property from the city of Lowell. The city of Lowell was aware of his intention to create parking at this lot. That is exactly what he's doing. In terms of neighborhood character, again, you're going to have a well-defined parking facility in the neighborhood with open, with landscape, open space, which currently doesn't exist in the lot. The end result will be a benefit to the neighborhood. There'll be no environmental issues whatsoever here, negative environmental impacts. In fact, the environmental impacts will be positive. Any runoff from the site will be absorbed by the landscaped areas that will be in place. The greenery will be, there will be shade trees helping to offset the urban, urban heat island effect, as well as the other landscaping that will be in place. So we feel that we meet the criteria for issuance of the special permit. With regard to the variance, we believe that relief can be granted without any detriment to the public good. Clearly, this neighborhood is in need of off-street parking. We are providing eight off-street parking spaces. And sure, we wish we had more, but eight is all we can get on this lot, considering the landscape requirements that are in place. The intent of zoning is satisfied. The code clearly allows for a residential parking facility in the urban, single-family zoning district with the issuance of a special permit. And clearly, a hardship would result to Mr. DeRozier if relief was not granted. He purchased this property with the sole intent of creating parking. The city has the right to divest him of his interest in this property if he doesn't do what he intended to do here. So again, we respectfully request approval of the issuance of the special permit and the relief that we're requesting pursuant to 6.1.0 for increasing the length of the curb cut. Thank you. We're happy to try to address any concerns or questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, we're going to open question the comments of the board here. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In my judgment, the benefits outweigh the concerns expressed this evening. And in fact, I believe the creation of the parking lot actually helps mitigate those concerns, and as a result, I'll be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. All right, the chair recognizes Mr. Procol. Mr. Procol, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question for Mr. DeRozier. How many properties are owned by the applicant in that area?
Eight.
Eight? So we're looking, it says eight properties, looking for eight, so one space per property?
Not exactly sure how they're going to be assigned, but they will be assigned to residents. There'll be placards provided for anybody that has authority, any resident of Mr. DeRozier that has authority to park here. You know, they have eight, a need for much more than eight parking spaces, but all we have is eight, and those eight spaces will be assigned to eight different residents of Mr. DeRozier's properties.
Okay. So current tenant, so it's only tenants that parks here today, or is it just?
I'm sorry, what was?
So is it only tenants, is tenants that parks there today? Or is it just?
No, not necessarily the, there are more than eight people that park there today. Not everybody will be able to park there.
Okay.
Just eight residents.
Okay.
And again, there'll be a placard, they'll have, they'll have, you know, they'll have, it's, you know, it will be somebody with a, you know, the license plate will be, you know, in possession, the registration and license will be in possession of Mr. DeRozier. So they'll be able to make sure that who, people that are parking there are supposed to be parking there.
So there'll be less cars parking there when this is done, which would make it more accessible to get in and out?
Absolutely. In addition to that, it will, there'll be one means of ingress and egress to and from the site.
Right.
Be clearly defined parking, as noted in the site plan, depicted in the site plan.
So there'd be, so with the, so this is a reason why you'll be able to put shade trees, snow management?
Right.
And so forth?
That's right. Yeah, there's plenty of parameter around the site that allows for that.
Okay, well, thank you for the updated site plan that we were reviewing today. Okay, I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Procol. All right, the chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the comments from the neighbors on this, but yeah, this has seemed to like, as remember, Brier said, more of a benefit to the area than a hindrance. I mean, understanding what they're, you know, the experiences that they're going through, but like you mentioned, Counselor, there's going to be less cars coming in and out of that lot right now. I guess one question I do have, and this probably goes to some of the comments from the abutting neighbors. Looking at the design, I know you're coming, it's going to be on the side, the end of Rockdale Avenue instead of the, coming down towards?
Fletcher.
Fletcher Street. Any, I mean, I'm sure, I mean, if you want to go over it, but any reason why the entrance and the egress can't come off of Fletcher Street? Because it seems to me if there's a car coming out, they're more apt to go down towards Fletcher Street than they are going down Rockdale. Wouldn't that be, isn't that more of a beneficial way of doing it?
But not, but I believe it's the shape of the lot.
Yeah, I mean, I understand, I'm just trying to, because more to the point of the abutting neighbors, I mean, the egress is across the street from their property, the ones that spoke today.
It's the shape of the lot.
The shape, I understand, yeah, the shape of the lot, and that's kind of the only way you can.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And I'm sure, and that'll take away the possibility of the extra shade trees that.
Right, and you need that center drive aisle so that cars can maneuver.
Yeah, okay. No, no, it's just something I was just kind of curious about, but anyways, again, I appreciate the comments from the abutting neighbors. I understand their pain, but looking at this for special permit purposes, I'm looking at the criteria: social, economic, and community needs served by the proposal, taking cars off the, off of a very, very busy, highly-dense neighborhood. It meets those needs. Traffic flow, safety, again, parking and loading, same thing. The adequacy of utilities or other public services. Neighborhood character and social structure, again, getting back to that, very, very dense neighborhood with numerous cars. So I think, I think that would, that would meet my, my criterias for a special permit. But I guess one other question I would have is, is it going to be planted signage for like, does like signage for, in the lot that says, "These are only designated for" whatever number of properties that?
Yes.
Mr. DeRozier's.
There will be signage within the lot.
Okay, and I guess what's, I mean, how is it going to be policed, I guess, other than you get, like you said, you'll have the license plates, license plate numbers?
And placards. They're going to be assigned placards for somebody using the lot.
Okay.
So if, if there's a, if there's a vehicle parked there that doesn't have a placard, it's subject to being towed. And they do have a tow contract with Stewart Towing.
Okay, good, all right. Sounds good, so, yep. Again, understanding the concerns of the neighbors, but this seems like a no-brainer to me, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. All right, the chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Ms. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. It seems like there's a neighborhood in a little turmoil here. I don't necessarily think that putting a parking lot here is going to solve any of the issues. The parking might get worse, but that's not really the property owner's fault, per se, if everybody's kind of using that lot now, willy-nilly, just pulling in and doing whatever. So this is going to add a little order to the area. Some of the complaints, I totally understand, plowing, garbage, but those are all city issues. You have to go to the city, call your city council on those. This parking lot might clean that up a little bit. So I think we're taking out issues with city services on a property owner, trying to kind of make some order in that area. I think the alternative would be worse for the neighborhood if we tried to build there, right? If we're in front and trying to put in a single-family house with no parking, well then it would make everything worse. So we might have some spillover, but I would recommend you get in touch with your city councilor, the city council, and Lowell Police on those parking issues. This is in front of us. I think what they're asking for is minimal curb cut and special permit. I'm glad we clarified the parking dimensions, which are fine, because I noticed that as well. So really, we're looking for usage, which it's already being used. This is actually going to add some order and some vegetation that's not just weeds, which is kind of what's going on now, and assigned parking. So I empathize with the neighborhood, but it doesn't seem like this is going to add to the issues that are already there. And the issues that I'm hearing, whether it's loud activities, arguments, trash pickup, plowing, those aren't really the property owners. In this case, this parking lot is not going to affect that at all. So I do support this, and I hope the issue's going to get worked out within the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. The chair recognizes Mr. Shannon. Mr. Shannon, do you have any comments, sir?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am looking at a Google map of the area, try to get better kind of feel for it, and it seems like it's kind of a free-for-all. There's no demarcations, there's overgrowth, and I can understand why there, there may be chaos there. So hopefully, having a structured lot with striping and the appropriate signage could mitigate some of that chaos that seems to disrupt some of those tenants if, again, they're arguing over spots, or they're just parking, you know, they're too cramped, and that's interfering with other services. So the question had already been answered. One thing I want to ask, will there be clear signage so that violators of that policy will be, you know, that'll be enforced? And you don't have someone who has a placard showing up and being very upset and causing, you know, additional disturbance in the neighborhood. So I do feel that this project will mitigate some of it. I think that outweighs the concerns of the tenants, although we do appreciate those concerns and comments. You have pride in your neighborhood, and hopefully, DeRozier Properties can continue to work with those abutters and just kind of peacefully coexist. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. If it's okay with my colleagues, I'm just going to give a little bit of my time to one of the neighbors here. He had a comment or question. Did you have a comment or question, sir? Yeah, go ahead. Just be brief, because, you know, it's closed, but yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for giving me another opportunity to bring some of my concerns. So when he is saying about the eight properties or the eight parking, are they assigned to just his own tenants? Or is anyone, again, I didn't get the answer to that question, is, like me, that parking is directly in front of my house? And really, it benefits my tenants, not only my tenant, it benefits everyone in the neighborhood because people pack, people come from different area to pack there. So if it's going to be privatized, and that one, I don't know, that one, I'm just trying to learn that, is that parking going to be beneficial to me? Or can my tenant allow to pack there? Or it's just going to be his eight properties that he have in the area that it's just going to be for them? If that is the case, I think probably it's really unfair to the neighbors, because this is a public area that really serves so many people. And I think if they really allow one single person to use it, with, to satisfy his tenants, please rethink about it again, because us, we also live there. You know, sometime when we come in the area, like one of the neighbor mentioned, his properties are primarily occupied by, you know, nothing against students, I was a student myself. And really, it is, even when you come, the parking, you know, they pack all over the place. If we're not going to have a chance to allow us to pack there, it's just really, I don't think really that, you know, it's beneficial to us, because we all have property that we all pay taxes. Now, everyone has the right to pack there, and I'm, myself, as an owner, if they're asking me, because I've actually reached out to the city before, asking for opportunity to improve the area, to allow parking for, not only for me, for everyone around there, and I think probably should also be given a chance to, you know, other, you know, people who are willing to, to share the parking, especially us. 13 Rockdale is right, the parking is right in front of my house. So, and he is, you know, he's on this side, I'm right here, he is on the left side. And if we really allow him to privatize that area and really use it for himself, there is a parking in the area. I have a two-family. The other people behind him is like four families. And if it's just for one person, maybe, I don't know where he's at, and if he can mention the address, because I don't think those eight properties are right there on 8 Rockdale. So people coming from far away to pack there, where people actually who dread they cannot pack there. I please ask for the board to, if you can, to consider your decisions.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, I think, I think for me, I do appreciate the comments of the neighbors here. The concerns you brought up are valid. I do think kind of just making this parking lot, and like my colleague said, with the placards and the sign and the striping, it's going to mitigate a lot of these issues. You know, and again, end of the day, I think Mr. DeRozier and the neighbors, they want to be in harmony and work together. I think some of the concerns the neighbors brought up, I've seen Mr. DeRozier work with the neighbors. I would encourage you to, again, this is a private lot and a private project, just reach out to them. I'm sure they're willing to work with the neighbors. You know, whether that's guest parking, visitor parking, or what the case may be, I do think this project is going to help mitigate a lot of the concerns that people are talking about, with noise and the chaos, the hustle and bustle, and the eyesore. This is really an improvement to the lot. Those are my comments. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Counselor?
Nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, any other comments from my colleagues? Yeah, Ms. Callahan?
Just to reiterate, Counsel, and just for the neighbors, too, Counsel, and you pointed this out. I mean, Mr. DeRozier's purchased this property from the city for the sole purposes of creating the parking lot for his residences. If he doesn't do that, then the property goes back to the city, and it's now back to what it is now, which is a free-for-all of cars and trash and, you know, no, no snow mitigation and things like that. So he's actually making the property, for what he's proposing, better for what he's got, and if he doesn't do that, then... And if he doesn't do that, then, you know, if he can't just put like a single family on there now, because that beats the covenant of whatever was sold.
Exactly. There were conditions in that deed. The intent was to purchase the property from the yard sale program in order to utilize it for residential parking. That's, you know, he was clear with his intent with the city. The city sold him the property through the yard sale program. It was just about a year ago, a year ago tomorrow, to be exact. And here we are, before you tonight, requesting that we redevelop the property for parking. If he doesn't do that, and he just, you know, abandoned the property and let it nature take over, the city would have the right to assert its right of reversion and divest him of his interest.
Yep, no, I agree. Obviously, that's a point that needs to be made.
Right.
I mean, to the, to the public, to the members of the public in the neighborhoods. And again, not, I'm not downplaying their concerns. They're very, they're valid concerns, but, I mean, this is the situation that this property is in right now, and Mr. DeRosa has every right to do it, but he has to do it based on the covenants of what he purchased.
Yeah, it's a congested neighborhood, no question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Is this under a criteria where we could have an administrative review at some point?
Yeah, we could do that. We could do that, yeah.
Would you agree if we do administrative review?
Sure, I guess for purposes of, what's the purpose? For any specific purpose?
I'll leave it to Member Prokop.
Well, again, I was thinking of the, for instance, the snow removal, you know, things of that nature, just to ensure that the shade trees are there, to ensure that there are eight cars parking, you know, when the project is done. Because I feel like at some point, when this is done and it's in production, that hopefully the neighbors, the abutters, can see that it is working. You know, so I thought maybe it's something that we can review to see that it's.
Yeah, so that's up to the board. If you're going to do that, I would suggest you give it, you know, maybe eight, nine months?
Yeah, yeah, that's typically what we do, right?
Yeah, I think it's six months or nine months or a year or something like that.
Normally, between six and nine. I was going to suggest eight.
Yeah, we just have the, you know, assuming we can get underway before the winter.
Yeah.
If not, it gets pushed to the spring. So that's why I say nine on the outside end.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay.
And again, I think.
So for purposes of just confirming that the lot was developed, built as proposed?
Right, and as you said, if things are not done, the city has the right.
Right.
So.
City always will have that right. It's in the deed, it runs with the deed.
Yep.
In perpetuity.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Mr. Prokop.
One more item, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I don't know, I can't remember if it was brought up, or councillor, you said that you're in agreement. We, I know the city put several proposed conditions on their comments, and, I mean, you would.
We did not have any concerns with those conditions.
Okay, so you would.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
With those conditions we talked about from DPD, okay, perfect.
Incorporated, yes.
Incorporate them. It's part of the special permit here. And again, to be neighborly, please, I would urge you, nothing formal, to just work with Mr. DeRosa. I think he's a fair guy, so please, we can be neighborly here. All right, any other comments from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, can I motion, please?
To you, Mr. Chairman, regarding ZBA 2025-38 for a special permit at 1416 Rockdale Avenue under zoning articles 12.6 to construct a paved parking area at 1416 Rockdale Avenue to accommodate the parking of eight nearby properties.
With the conditions we talked about, yeah.
Yeah, with the conditions that we talked about and administrative review.
All right, motion by Mr. Prokop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brier. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved conditions.
Member Prokop.
Conditions.
Approved conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Hovey.
Approved.
Member Shanahan.
Approved.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you best of luck.
Thank you, thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, and have a good evening. Thank you, folks, for coming out tonight. Have a good evening. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda here, under new business. We have ZBA-2025-37. A petition is a variance applicant, is Edner Delise, property located at 239 East Merrimack Street. The applicant has applied to the load and board of appeals, seeking the variance approval to convert an existing two-unit residential building to a four-unit residential building. The subject property is located in the urban multifamily UMF zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval from the zoning board of appeals per section 5.1 for relief from the lot area dwelling unit requirement, per section 6.1 for relief from off-street parking requirements, and for any of the relief requiring the low zoning ordinance. Just to note, the applicant legal act did not run and would need to be continued to the October 16th zoning board hearing. All right, anyone here from East Merrimack Street? All right, seeing none. Any comments from my colleagues before we have a motion to continue the matter? All right, seeing none.
Actually, one.
Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir, go ahead.
Can we get clarification on what they're trying to do there? There's two different things said. They're trying to go from two to three, or three to four. So we don't, like, if you read it, it says, we're going from three units to four units, but then in the narrative, in some of the, it says, we're going from two to three, it's just.
I'll clarify in staff comments, but I think a lot of the, it confused me a little too, and I think part of the confusion is that there's actually two buildings on the property that have residences, and I think in certain instances, they're.
So the one in the back is counted as a unit?
Yeah, so in certain instances, they're referring to the whole lot, and how many units in certain instances are just referring to the building, but I'll clarify in the.
Okay, so you think we're going two to three in that main building?
Right, in a total of three to four.
Yeah, with the one in the back, okay. Yeah, just if we can clarify that, because, I mean, yeah, thanks. Especially with the parking being an issue, we want to see what we're really kind of talking about. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. That's a good comment. All right, any other comments before we continue the matter?
Sorry, three, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
You double-checked two, and I looked at the package, and I printed it out, and I looked at it again online. A part of the package, after the deed, there's like a bunch of pages that, I don't know if they're photos or something, they're like in black, and they're like scribbly, black, photostatic copies of something, I don't know what they are.
I can ask them what they're supposed to be.
Yeah, if you just double-check them, you're not sure what they're supposed to be, or whether it's, right. It was in, it was in the package, like, right after the deed, and between the deed and the special permit application. So if you just ask them whatever that is and have them resubmit it, if that's something that was supposed to be part of the package, so I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure we got everything. I don't want them showing up saying, did you look at this? And like, no, because it wasn't there.
That's a good point.
It was in, it was all scrambled, so.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan.
Yep.
And thank you, Mr. Ricker, for that. All right, any other comments before we continue the matter? All right, seeing none, can I motion to continue the matter, please, to October 16th hearing?
Yeah, to you, Mr. Chairman, regarding ZBA 2025-37. A property located at 239 East Merrimack Street under section 6.1 to be continued November 16th.
All right, motion by Mr. Prokop to continue the matter.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved continuance.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved continuance to October 16th, 2025.
Member Prokop.
Approved continuance to October 16th, 2025.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Hovey.
Approved.
Member Shanahan.
Approved.
All right, the matter's been continued to October 16th, just for the public notice, this is the public notice, there'll be no other notice regarding this matter. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have ZBA-2025-39. The petition is a special permit. The applicant is Phoenix Ave Realty LLC, property located at 55 and 77 Phoenix Ave. The applicant has applied to the load and board of appeals, seeking a special permit approval to erect an internally illuminated sign at 55 and 77 Phoenix Ave, a subject property located in the light industrial ally zoning district. Their proposal requires special permit approval from the zoning board of appeals per section 6.3 for internally illuminated signage and for any other leave required on load or ordinance. Anyone here for Phoenix Ave? Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. My name's Gary Bolduc, and I'm with Metro Sign, I'm representing the owner. And we received standard permits, non-illuminated permits, but it's a light industrial area that's not very well lit, so the owner is now asking if we could internally light the signage.
Okay.
And it's, like I said, it's not a well-lit area, it's a light industrial road with a dead end, so it's not very well lit right now. And with the shorter days, we'd prefer to light it.
Okay. Okay, anything else you want to add, sir?
Not really, no. I mean, we've already got the permit for not being lit, so we're just asking if we can get a special permit for internally lighting it.
Okay.
The dimensions, everything's the same.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you, sir. We're going to open the hearing to the public now. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to petition? An opposition, an opposition. All right, seeing that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of petition? In favor, in favor, seeing the public hearings closed. All right, we're going to open question the comments to the board now. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any issues with this request. It's pretty standard, pretty minor. I would encourage the applicant just to, if you haven't seen the engineering comments, just to be careful with the, that it doesn't encroach on the city right away.
Yes, yeah, we have checked. Yes.
Okay. And what's the time of illumination?
There's a, I'd have to check with the permit, but there's certain hours, we have a timer on it, so.
Okay, you have a timer.
It can be turned on and off.
Okay.
You know, from whatever at the.
Dawn to dusk, dusk of dawn or whatever.
Five o'clock it goes on, it turns off at six in the morning. But it has that flexibility.
Got you. Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I don't have any concerns on this. Even the illumination, I mean, Phoenix Ave is a completely industrial avenue, street. I don't even know if there's any residential properties on that. There's no, and there's no one here in opposition, so my concerns about the, as long as your illumination, I mean, this whatever it is, so, yeah. Normally, when we hear illuminated signage, that would, it's in areas, there's some residential area that may, there may be concerns from some of the neighbors, but with this area being all industrial, I mean, I can't imagine anybody's staying there overnight or whatever, that's going to concern, or give them fits or something like that with the signage. So I, for this particular situation, I wouldn't have any concern about the illumination or putting any conditions on it, so I could approve it as is, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thanks. These are already installed, correct?
These are not installed.
So the concern of the engineering about encroachment, you're already not encroaching, so.
No, we've already got to step back.
Right, okay, so, yeah, good luck. Turn them on.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Shanahan. Mr. Shanahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, just, I think, having internally illuminated sign would probably be a benefit to people exiting that Hanifin parking lot. I mean, it's a heavily trafficked road for people using the air. It looks like there's a concrete foundation. Is that the location of the sign, next to the phi hydrant?
Yes, yeah. They've already got the concrete footings put in for the standard permit that we have. They're going to clad that with like a stone veneer, so it's not completed yet. We're not even close to being completed yet. But then we were asked to file for illumination if possible.
Just trying to get a feel for the location of the sign, so I don't have any issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shanahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. I don't have any comments. I think this is straightforward, makes sense. Again, if anything, it helps brighten up the area, so there's a little more safety component to it, so I think makes sense.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further comments, can I motion to approve this, please?
Yeah. Yeah, to you, Mr. Chairman, regarding ZBA 2025-39 for a special permit at 55 and 77 Phoenix Ave for special permit approval for a direct and internal illuminated sign at Phoenix Ave.
All right, motion by Mr. Prokop.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
A member Prokop.
Approved.
Member Brier. Member Hovey.
Approved.
Member Shanahan.
Approved.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you best of luck, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out. Have a good evening. Thank you. All right, moving on to other business, we have a pre-application hearing, 236 Broadway Street. The applicant has requested a pre-application hearing to present a proposed plan to construct in addition to the property at 236 Broadway Street to include 55 residential units.
No one is on the Zoom.
Did we get any communication that they won't be here tonight? Anyone? Did anyone get anything from anybody? Mr. Ricker, did you get anything?
We did not. They had a planning board hearing, that there was some confusion around their date for the planning board hearing, but they're scheduled for the 20th, so I'm not sure if there's confusion around this date as well.
Okay. What is the wish of the board? Would you want to continue this pre-hearing, or?
I would suggest continuing it, I guess. I mean, you said, Dylan, you said, so they're going to go before the planning board for a pre-application?
Yep, they're going before both boards.
Okay. And when's that scheduled for, again, do you know?
October 20th.
October 20th?
Yep.
I mean, if you want to put it on for the 16th, I guess, it's fine, but.
Is there any available spots on the October 16th, or the one after that, Mr. Ricker, you think?
October 16th has availability, both meetings do.
Okay, so we have an available slot, October 16th, or the one after as well? Does it sound like?
Nope.
I would say the one after the planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, let's do the one after planning, I like that, too. So, Mr. Ricker, do we have a slot for the October 27th hearing? Like, for that one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's a pre-application.
Oh, pre-application, excuse me.
It's not a public, it's not a public hearing, so, I mean, it's, we can put whatever we want for that. we want for that. Slot them in.
Okay. All right. So there's no further comments. We're, we're continuing this matter, this pre-hearing to October 27th.
And we don't need a vote for that, right, Dylan? It's just scheduling?
Oh, we can make a vote, just make it official. I'm not 100% sure if it's necessary.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree. Just, just make a vote, just to make it official. It's, it's a pre-hearing. So I understand, it's, it's a little more informal. But if we have a motion, Mr. Prokop, just to continue the pre-hearing to October 27th, yes, sorry.
Okay, to you, Mr. Chairman, regarding 236 Broadway Street, pre-application hearing to be continued, October 27th.
All right. Motion by Mr. Prokop to continue the matter.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck?
Approved continuance.
Vice Chair Callahan?
Approved continuance to October 27th, 2025.
Member Prokop?
Approved continuance to October 27th, 2025.
Member Brier? Member Havi?
Approve.
Member Shanahan?
Approved.
All right. The pre-hearing has been continued. Again, this is informal, but there'd be no other notice for publication regarding this pre-hearing.
And again, Dylan, you'll let them know, obviously, Dylan weren't here yesterday, but you'll let them know.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Moving on to other business. We have the 2026 meeting schedule. Any questions, comments, concerns with the meeting schedule for 2026, that year, next year? All right, seeing none, can we have a motion to accept the meeting schedule for 2026?
To you, Mr. Chairman, motion to accept the 2026 meeting schedule.
All right. Motion by Mr. Prokop.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. That's the 2026 meeting schedule. All right. The minutes for approval for September 8th. Any comments, questions, edits to September 8th meeting minutes? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion to, to approve the minutes, please?
To you, Mr. Chairman, a motion to accept the meetings' minutes for September 8th, 2025.
All right. Motion by Mr. Prokop to accept the minutes.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes are unanimous. The minutes are approved. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues before we adjourn tonight here? All right, seeing none here. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? We, we don't have, we have elections of officer at the next hearing, October 16th.
Yeah, we, we mentioned that last meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Dennis is not here, so.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry.
All right. No further comments. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
To you, Mr. Chairman, a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
All right. Motion by Mr. Prokop to adjourn.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes are unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you and have a good night, folks.